Recording in progress.
All right.
Do they need more room? I could move down.
They're starting.
We're good. All right, good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. Welcome to the Historical Commission. And I'll call it to order the work session of the Superior Town Council and our dinner with the Historical Commission. So, good to see you all. Why don't we just go around the table and introduce ourselves? I think we all know who we are, but there are some new faces. I'm Mark Wieser, I'm the mayor.
Hi, I'm Jayce Cowish, council member.
Neil Shaw, council member.
Maureen Hoog.
Paul Gibbs, helping out.
Lorde Dorsey.
Jennifer Carter, Arts and History Superintendent.
Karen Walagorski.
Valerie Cartwright.
Erin Walagorski.
Dalton Velat.
Lynn Scottville.
Ben Sutcliffe, council member.
Jason Sirwood, mayor of Porton.
Heather Craig, council member.
All right. Well, welcome. Thanks for joining us for dinner. Hopefully, everybody got well fed. I'm gonna keep my talking to a minimum because Jen's already told me that I talk too much. So I'm gonna turn it over to the Historical Commission. Larry, are you gonna lead the show tonight?
I guess so. Dalton and I are teamed up here tonight, so as co-chairs. So the first item on the agenda there is the bronze memorial, the miner's memorial, was the bronze statue question. And really very happy with the results of the monument so far. And so to finish it off, we'd like to get a statue of a coal miner. So our issue there is financing. There's some in the budget already. And looking at ways to develop the rest of the cost. So a couple of questions, and hopefully you all have a chance to take a look at the monument. JG did a great job of following up and making sure everything got done properly. And so...
When we had this, sorry, Jen, I'm gonna talk. When we had this item in our budget, Matt, for this past year, so this $35,000, was that anticipated to be the full cost that we would be funding for this statue? Or was that an incremental part of the larger total?
Because it's part of the whole cost.
Okay. All right, so we're $44,000 short.
I think that budget was sort of umbrellaed for the miner memorial. I don't think it was known that it was turning into a three-part project.
Okay. And I know one of the things that we had initially explored, because there is a coal miner statue already kind of by the target, we had looked, well, is that an option available to us that we could potentially move it? And we did find out that's kind of out of the question, unfortunately, due to kind of ownership of the statue and kind of the artist's preference as well. Which is kind of interesting because we thought that would be a good, cost-effective alternative. And when we did kind of do a breakdown of some of the costs associated with this, some of the unique kind of standout items in identifying a potential bronze maker for this was really tailoring it to Superior mining history. So the miner that's actually by target doesn't necessarily actually resemble a miner that's in this area, would be found in this area at this particular time. So this would include costs associated with making sure they had period-appropriate attire. And even one of the manufacturers we were surprised was said that they could model the face of the miner on one of the miners in Superior who potentially lost their lives. So we thought that could be a really unique tribute and kind of standout from a lot of the other miner memorials that we've seen throughout the state. Okay.
Is there been any grant funding explored, or do you know if there's any opportunities for grants to help offset the cost?
We haven't talked too much about grants specifically with this one.
We know our grant writer did explore it, and I don't think she found any opportunities.
Well, I, you know, I think that this is an important piece. You guys have been working on it for years. We've doubled down on our commitment to public art, CAPS's budget is large, and they're looking at doing some substantial pieces that cost a lot of money. So I don't, these are one-time purchases and they're not gonna last for decades. So I think it's a good thing that we're, we've got somebody identified that's gonna be doing this. And, you know, things cost money, but I think it's an investment in the community. So I'm okay with it.
Yeah, what we're looking for, too, is whether we can go ahead and put in the order for a statue.
Right.
Because get us about 50% committed to it, so.
Yeah, well, what we have funded for in 2025 is basically the 50%, right? So.
And from a timeline perspective, it would take a significant amount of time to make. So actually, once you have approved, the additional 50% would be available, one, it's about ready for completion, two. So the timing actually kind of works fairly well with this product in particular.
I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think we did talk about this briefly last year, about trying to, I mean, the fact is, as a state of Colorado, it's mining, heavy, lot of history of mining in this state, of this city, this community. It's not just Superior, it's just this broader community is a testament to. I believe we can find the other $40,000, you know, just from donate, like individual donations and just from the mining museum. And hell, there's a half dozen Fortune 500 companies that are in mining that should be willing to contribute to this. And I think what we can do is commit to, you know, because we can backfill, like if it's in the 2026 budget, and we can get a donation, and we can backfill it, and then go that route. We still have to set up the Superior Foundation, which is a TBD, but, you know, we're working on it. It's coming. So that'll, that'll be a vehicle that these donations can funnel through. Because I do think we need to do this, but I don't think it should be the town of Superior taxpayers exclusively. I think people want to contribute to this. They love to contribute to art directly. I think the challenge right now we have is the towns. You can't just throw it at the town because it gets lost in the general fund. There's no taxable deductible donation. So I'm in support of it, but I also want to commit to ensuring that we can offset it with some donations.
That'd be great. And if you're exploring different options, too, for funding, whatnot, I know we'd be interested in seeing how we could help or support those efforts, too.
Is there any mechanism now for people to donate to the Historical Commission specifically? Or do they become a museum?
Yeah, we accept, like, very minor donations on a financial level, just like people are generous enough to drop $20 off.
There have been bigger donations as well, like after the fire. So there is that opportunity. They get mixed into the budget, and we work with JG on either using those annually or deferring them as able.
Do you have, like, the museum elsewhere, when you're doing tours, like a QR code that could be linked to, like a Venmo or something, to that account, to where it would be easy for people to donate?
I think we've discussed that, and it's more problematic to set something like that in.
So if there was a fiscal sponsor, that would be appropriate. Okay, that's helpful.
I like Neil's idea of trying to find people who would donate, because I think there's probably plenty out there. I'm also curious, this might run a bit, but because it's a piece of art, and we're looking at next year budgeting for that, if we don't have to cover it, is there any portion of CAPS budget that can help cover that because it is art? It is still art, or no?
Possibly. Like, CAPS has asked, I don't know if you saw the, we got a kind of preliminary budget asked from CAPS this week. So they're, they're going big in terms of what they're asking for. So what they're, what they're asking for right now is bigger than what they've ever gotten. So, but your question, is there room, given that we set the budget? We can make room.
I saw that budget, and that's why I'm thinking, can we carve out a little bit of that for this? Because it is art. So in addition, like, anything that we can't do donations.
And it's arts is very specific to the town of Superior. You're not an artist from out of town coming in to make some monumental things. This is historically accurate to the town. So I think, you know, deriving some funding from art, because it is a statue, it's a statutory, it's basically art. So I think we should really maybe cross the themes of the advisory committees and CAPS will help in this instance. I could ask.
Yeah, we have our dinner with them at the end of August.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, they have been working on finding the artist and what this is. So, yeah, in terms of the collaboration, you know, mixing budgets and making a project happen, I'm all for it. I don't want to overly complicate things unnecessarily. And all of a sudden, well, if this becomes like a joint project, then all of a sudden they're saying, well, let's do something a little different. Way to sneeze your baby. I don't want to contaminate it with, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen. But I think it's a good point. And at the end of the day, like, to the extent that we're allocating any taxpayer dollars for public art projects, whether the public art projects are for CAPS, or for Historical Commission, or for something else, at the end of the day, like, it's, it's art. It's coming from the budget, so. All right. So in terms of the, of your ask, Neil, with the foundation, setting up some mechanism for the town to accept donations, is that something, Matt, that's on the town's radar that we're exploring that?
Yeah, something, Joe, I talked about this part is good place.
So Superior Rising is 501(c)(3). And we have been discussing briefly and very, like, just touching on the subject of changing the intent of that organization to be a Superior-based mechanism that people could donate to. So that Superior Rising or Superior Foundation could be modified to meet whatever the town needs that could receive money that isn't through the town. And so that could be a mechanism that would be already set up, and we could create something like, where a QR code goes to our website, and it goes to the account, it's allocated for specific lanes. And so it's been discussed as a good reason for us to, like, pick up the conversation, move it along. But that's, like, it's not a secret, but we haven't really figured out what it's gonna look like yet. And it's just been discussed, because a lot of communities take something like, wasn't Louisville Rising came up during COVID, I think, and then they used it for some of the fires. So it kind of morphed into whatever they needed it to be for the moment. So I think that'd be a good thing for us to have.
The same way that the Louisville Library Foundation funnels donations into purchasing books for the library. And people used to make a lot of donations to it through their water bill, because it's right there. So we could potentially do something similar. But it'd be an arm's length, you know, sort of unrelated to town of Superior, but funnels money into the town of Superior. And we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, we would not be able to.
I think it's, it would be good for us to have, you know, just in general, a mechanism for the town and its advisory committees to accept donations in any number of ways, right? Like, for whatever project people are working on, oh, it's National Trails Day, and somebody's really passionate about, you know, trail management and preservation, and they want to give a substantial contribution, or, or not a substantial one, but just some contribution through Venmo, you know, quick QR code. I think that that would be great.
Yeah, we've had some visitors to the museum who have been asking whether or not it can be a 501(c)(3) because they want to get their donation on tax, on their taxes. So it's not a good idea.
And just so you know, CAPS is thinking about, you know, if there's an entity out there that wants to make a donation of a large piece of art, they'd likely only do that if there's a tax-deductible aspect to it. So it's a gating item for them. So, you know, it is on our radar. I think the issue is, trying to set up a new foundation right now is really hard because the IRS basically laid everybody off. So that's why we're trying to want to leverage the existing foundation. Enough of the inside, basically.
All right. Interpretive signs?
Yeah, we have some interpretive signs that need to be replaced and some new ones created. The one right in front of the Astley Park Museum still has the text of the building that burned down. So there's some accuracy, shall we call it, in there. And then the new path has a little bump out by the homestead house, the idea of putting an interpretive sign in there. And in the central park, I think the one near the cemetery would be to give some historical information on the cemetery, although there's three interpretive signs inside. So that's what we're looking at for those.
That's over to you.
Just a question on the cemetery, since it's not a specific discussion item here, is, with the other two that would have the interpretive signs, you could at least go visit them, the cemetery. Are there thoughts on the, like, the opportunity to visit the cemetery, or are there set hours that we could sort of start looking at?
Yeah, we've discussed that a decent amount, being able to have it open and accessible for more people. It really kind of boils down to, I think, time. Because we're kind of uncomfortable with just letting it freely be open to the general public. And we want someone from the Historical Commission to at least be able to monitor, because in the past, part of the reason that the fencing was put up was because of vandalism in that area previously. I remember when I was a kid, it's like there was no fencing around that cemetery that was later added. And there's just been concerns with just letting the average visitor come into that specific area, given the historical significance with a number of the different headstones that have been updated over the years. We do have, like, Civil War veterans who are there, so they are very old. So that's something that we've thought about. We have done tours of individuals reach out to the Historical Commission. We have done multiple tours in the past for Superior Town staff, or other individuals who are curious about it, or living family members of those deceased who are buried there. But I don't think we, like, really advertise that you can reach out to the commission to arrange a tour of that. And I think that's something that we could definitely try to improve on, but then it's just a matter of scheduling and, again, kind of allocating time for that.
And making sure it doesn't rain heavily and turn it into a mud.
Yeah, that, too.
If we need it to rain, we should just schedule a schedule.
And I also know, part of the reason, like, a lot of people might just not know that it's there is because of the fencing around the two. And that was also done from kind of an ecological perspective, because there are a lot of prairie dogs, and they actually started going into a lot of the graves. So that fencing was established to be deep enough to actually prevent prairie dogs from getting into the area and disrupting a lot of these graves.
Yeah, there's four feet of chain link fence underneath that wrought iron fence. And they were actually down into three graves, I believe. And they were bringing up bones, clothing, and parts of the old wooden casket, so.
Is the fence working now?
Yes, yes. And that was one of the reasons why we sort of liked to keep that locked, although I don't think there's prairie dogs up there now. But if that's left open, then they'd start coming back in there. Then we've got to try and get in and get them back out again.
Yeah, I think it's over to the town administration and the town council on deciding whether you want to have it closed and only open on demand, or you want to have it open 24 hours, or you want to have it open dawn to dusk, or 8:00 to 5:00. And all that would involve probably somebody from town staff who would have to come by and lock the gate 8 o'clock at night or something. So there's a real logistical thing to untie here and things.
I think one of the things we might like to see as well, and I don't know how we would do it, but get something on those gates, even though you're going in and out, they'll close behind you, so that they don't end up, in case somebody just happens to not be paying attention and walks off, they're open, you know, but they can't slam on you. But so they'll come in and close themselves, and then somebody, of course, will have to come back and lock them.
And speaking of signs, there's a sign on the gate that's out of date, too. It gives the phone number to call to get the key for the lock. Never mind. There was a problem.
Now, we were talking about having signage up to where the cemetery is at at one time. This has been quite a while ago. It would have been agreed to that we would have a wrought iron archway put up over the entrance of the cemetery with a great big sign, Superior Cemetery. And, you know, I guess if you get that up in there and get it visible, that'll help for people to find out where it's at down in there.
Yeah, I think a central park opening, you know, there's gonna be more people wanting to potentially go explore over there. We get to have some signage, number one.
Do we have an idea as to how much the wrought iron sign?
I don't think that we had ever gotten that far to check in on it. They were just, we were talking about it, and then it just sort of disappeared. So to answer that, I would say probably no.
Okay.
What about the existing one that's running the park right now?
Aggressive.
That one...
Oh, you're talking about that gate?
Yeah. Well, there's a sign, Superior Cemetery, and an arch.
That was a gate that was done by a local person, apparently, who did the iron work on that. It was at the cemetery before the new fencing and gate were put in.
Well, that was put up when Boulder County ended up, if you will, took jurisdiction over that cemetery. And they're the ones that went in with the wire fence around it to keep cattle out. And I think that's when they had that put in. So, and that, you know, I don't know, I think we want to put that on the gate that's on there now. We talked about it, it might be a distraction, I mean, from the looks of the cemetery, but you wouldn't be able to see that from clear out on the roundabout, or the cul-de-sac out there. there.
At one time, I kind of come up with the idea of incorporating that into the new spences, those signs that were put in a few years ago and didn't, didn't fly. So it's, I think it's an asset.
Well, yeah, we have to keep it. We can't get rid of it. Or, I mean, we shouldn't.
There's still a lot of people looking for the cemetery over by the Grasso barn.
Yeah.
Well, my suggestion would be if there are improvements to the cemetery that need to be made, whether interpretive signage or decorative signage with the wrought iron fence, let's put that in the budgetary asks as well. We can look into it.
We do need to get some of this stuff done because I think we put quite a bit of money into putting the ground penetrating radar this last time and putting the pathways in there. We had to do that to make sure the pathways were on the grave site. So I don't remember how much, but the seating in there, there was, there was a few bucks put in there. We really need to get it where we can have people get in there and sort of, you know, take advantage of them.
Does Matt, the, any of the maintenance to the, to the cemetery, does that come out of the Parson Rec budget?
It does.
Okay. And do we have any cemetery maintenance items expected in this upcoming budget?
I don't believe so.
We actually were looking at proposing a auto gate pen on what was decided by the Historical Commission so that we could set up hours for access. Central Park will have a nice walkway entrance into the cemetery and there's a seating area that was designed to have this interpretive sign in it. So they didn't include the interpretive sign, but there's space for it. So that was kind of the background on asking for the interpretive sign for that location.
Well, if there's, if there's something that we want to include in the budget and that can and should be done, like let's, we're going into budget season soon, so let's make sure that even if it's something that's not necessarily anticipated for 2026, if it's 2027, 28, out years, let's at least have it in there so we have a ballpark estimate as to how much needs to go into upkeep and maintenance of the cemetery. But in terms of the ask tonight, in terms of the $5,000 for interpretive signage, I think that that's, that makes sense. And if we've got out of date, incomplete, you know, fading signs, I mean, signs just need to be updated periodically. We did a really nice job not too long ago on all of our trails with really nice looking interpretive signage. So the weight finding all throughout town. So I think we've got hopefully like a template that, that we can use and maybe try to be consistent with the signage that we've already deployed throughout town and, you know, leverage that going forward. All right. Anything further on signage? In terms of the cemetery access, I know we've talked about this periodically over the years. And I heard some people say you should keep it open because you want to encourage people to go visit. You want, and some people want to keep it closed because you want to discourage, you know, vandalism. And we also don't want to make it too hard for, for staff in terms of running people up there. So I guess my personal opinion is that I would defer to the recommendation of the, of the commission in terms of how best to utilize the cemetery and provide access. I don't feel necessarily equipped to say like, this is how it should be done when the commission is the one that's actually looking at the cemetery that closely and making recommendations. So I would defer to your expertise on that matter. But I'm just speaking for myself and not speaking for the full council.
I would agree with that. Be open to whatever the next thing, because I see all sides of it, wanting people to have access, wanting to discourage vandalism, wanting to not be arduous for staff. So taking all that into account, whatever you guys think.
Seems like the, the gate improvements that Leslie just mentioned is consistent with you, Wally, about how to prevent that from staying open. That's a good first step on that. All right, we got a $25,000 line item here for consultant. Talk to us about this.
Sure, yes. So this is just looking at the town preservation plan. This would be part of the future Arts and History Master Plan. So this is in conjunction with CAPS and looking at the specific areas of Superior that are kind of deemed as having historical significance. And in particular, what are kind of the steps that we should do to ensure the preservation of these sites? Superior doesn't have that many like historic buildings for instance, especially after the Marshall Fire. So we're very keen on working with a consultant just to kind of assess what are kind of the best steps with these kind of few remaining areas that we should do in order to make sure that they preserve for many years to come.
So would that be kind of like, you know, because we created the Arts Master Plan a few years ago, would that, is that sort of the similar kind of thing? Because the Arts Master Plan is all about, in that case, place making and connectivity and the Arts Master, or the Arts artery walk. So this would be part of, because part of my questions here, these were a lot of asks for '26, but what happened in '27, '28, '29, '30? How did, would that kind of help lay out some of the next five years?
Absolutely. Yeah, so that would be really good, I think, with overall planning and necessary next steps. And I also think personally kind of prioritization of different areas too. So if we worked on this and if we deemed like there's significant interest in the cemetery and making sure that that's adequately preserved with different signage, different gates, different access points for that, that's something that we could do if there's specific designated homes or buildings in the town that should also be prioritized, this is where we should focus kind of more time and energy on. So I think it would personally kind of help us from a historical standpoint because obviously we want to protect and preserve absolutely everything, but we know certain areas just require more time and energy and effort than others.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. It's a challenge because there isn't a master plan right now. We're kind of like, let's do this this year and then this year, but it'd be good to kind of have road map.
I think capping it under kind of an umbrella for arts and history, I think the public art collection could be in there. There's just so much that could really be a part of that, of a renewed master plan, kind of looking through different months.
Do you have an idea as to who does this sort of work? Who you'd like to work with? Would we bid this out? How would you go find this consultant?
For a master plan, yes, but Scott, you know.
I would suggest an RFP for at least three consultants. And there are, if we're going for a broader master plan, there are some very good ones around the Front Range area in Boulder and Denver that can do that kind of work. And there are great opportunities as well for historic preservation planning.
And a lot of companies that do, you know, specialize in master plans, they could subcontract that by now, the historic preservation parts.
There are a couple of companies that do both.
At some point, we've talked about refreshing Arts Master Plan anyway, so this could be a way to sort of leverage it.
Yeah, especially since they're kind of under the same umbrella and will have, I'd imagine a decent amount of overlap too.
And kind of adding new categories like collection management. So it's both the museum and the arts, we're looking at two large collections.
And facilities management.
And historic sites.
Yeah, you want to maintain the cemetery, you want to go with Secretary of Interior Standards for like the Grasso farm buildings or other approaches.
I think we've, we've updated most of our master plan documents or we're in the process of updating them right now. So probably get to be fully comprehensive.
JG, does it make more work for you to make, to make two of these rather than maybe make one comprehensive arts and history council?
That's what I'm thinking is one, you know, kind of have it in sections, but for sure. Because I think with the creation of an Arts and History Division as part of PROS, it sort of makes sense to, to have an Arts and History Master Plan because there are so many similarities and then obviously some differences. But I think that's sort of, you know, was my thought and vision on it, especially overseeing both advisory groups.
Yeah, can we maybe talk more about those two things going forward? Because the last thing I want to do is create a lot more work for staff where they double up their efforts on something. One is basically, one, one entity could take care of both of these things and manage both at the same time. And maybe that could make more of an equitable, you know, equitable split as far as funding goes to different groups rather than just one getting a massive share and everybody else just fighting for whatever's left over.
And I know this might be jumping ahead a little bit in the agenda, but that does kind of bring up to a part-time staff member, which is something I know, we on the Historical Commission have talked about, kind of a need for when it comes to cataloging different museum artifacts to making sure if we did want access to the cemetery, this could be something that an individual could assist there with, could help JG with a lot of the work. Because I know JG is spinning a million different plates at all times. So that's something that we've been interested in. And I know there's no budgetary figure for that one because obviously that's a little bit of a different ask. And it depends, I think, on the individual's qualifications, if they have archival experience as well versus just someone who can open up a lock for a cemetery. But that's as far as a part-time staff member goes, who could assist with arts and history, that's something that I know would be keen to be able to have and work with someone there.
You still need a staff member to supervise the individual, right?
For a part-time staffer, I think it depends on like what they're doing, but in some areas, yes. And that's where I think it depends if they had archival experience, if they worked with, let's say, the Louisville Museum and got any sort of certifications about wanting to do this as a part-time job, they might not need as much oversight to someone else.
Yeah, I thought we had this conversation before about that and we talked about maybe internship with somebody. Is that still a possibility to have? I mean, from the University of Colorado, getting a history student that's looking for an internship for the summer or during the school year to pick up that credit, that way they could work with you and it's not costing you or anything other than giving a letter of recommendation and school credit? Is that something that you could look into?
Yes, so right now, we actually do have an intern. She's a high school student and we looked at some of the requirements for an internship. She is not doing this for credit because that actually does account for a lot of different staff time and resources to actually make sure that they're doing specific work for a certain number of hours. So surprisingly, having an intern with credit in particular requires, I'd probably argue, a bit more oversight than having someone who, let's say, can hit the ground running with a lot of archival experience behind them.
We, we did look into internships with CU and they do require pay.
Oh, they do? Okay.
That's common standard these days. We have over 70 interns in the company and they're all paid reasonable wages.
Well, it must be nice. You know, I was coming up in architecture, no architect or intern got paid. That's why I stayed in construction. Good for them.
I did reflect, yeah.
Yeah, I want to say, yeah. Good for them.
Now, one of the things with bringing people in, and that's okay, we need to do that, but a lot of times if one of our staff of the Historical Commission is going to have to get in there and sit down and show them what to do, how to do. Right now, some of these people are just working hours, hours, hours as it is. And then to have to come in and do that even on top of it, it's kind of, especially on the volunteer job, it's kind of getting to the point where it's asking an awful lot. I just thought I'd throw that out there. It's just something to think about.
Okay.
I think we have planned that the staff personnel would oversee the, like JG, for example, rather than commission. Well, it's okay. No, I mean, that's a thought.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to any proposal that I'm hearing so far. You know, anytime we make a staffing decision now, like it's, it's always a complicated one because it's not a one-time expense, it's an every-year expense. So we just need to be, you know, mindful that we're hiring in the right way and in the right departments and in a way that's, you know, sustainable for the town on a going forward basis. So we want to make sure that, and we've been talking about that now for the past year amongst the town council here about really looking closely at how big we need to be to perform at the level that we want to perform and deliver the services that our residents are expecting, recognizing also that we have an excellent staff right now and we're already asking way more of them than is probably reasonable to ask of anybody. So, and they don't complain. So that's, that's one of the problems also, that our staff is never complaining, they go above and beyond, work really hard, and then we think that that's normal. So, but.
Yeah, we're lucky to have the staff we do throughout this city government, especially our liaison person here.
Of all the years we've been doing this, we have not had anybody in staff, town staff, board, anybody that, who hasn't worked with us and just been fabulous. And we've all worked together and treated each other with respect. And that's important.
Yep, absolutely. All right. Want to talk about the trail?
Yeah, we've been talking about the trail for a few years in cooperation with the Boulder County Open Space. And Scott's been carrying the ball on that one. So Scott, would you like to speak to us?
Leslie, actually give us some update on the park side of it. We, otherwise I don't have an update since last year when we were waiting to figure out proceeding with actually development of the, of the trail and if there's been progress made on that aspect.
We did put in a grant request with Boulder County for a short quarter mile trail. First, like, I don't know, 150 feet are on town property and the rest is county. There are a couple different renditions there. One was just out back, one was out with a little lollipop on the end to circle the site. And then also some recommendations for interpretive signage along the way. That grant funding opportunity pretty much dissolved. I don't know if they're going to resurrect that or not. We haven't heard where that is. Certainly there's, we can go ahead and put in additional grant applications for that, but.
Has either one of you talked to Elizabeth Brooks? I think she took Carol Bean's place.
I don't, do you know that name? Issue with the chem?
Well, relatively new, I think. She took Carol's place.
So Carol Bean was the county historian that we were communicating some of the interpretive and other needs around the industrial mine site was she retired late last year, early this year, and they finally replaced her. And I have not met her and the only thing I know is she's not a historian. They got a planner to replace her instead. So I don't think anything would change there and hopefully, hopefully nothing will change. She was not the decision maker anyway, she was the.
Yeah, I met her up at Chautauqua at that awards ceremony and she was wanting to connect with us. I think she's still wanting to.
Scott had contact with Vella there in the Boulder County Open Space.
Yeah, we were talking to the manager, I don't remember his name either. Sorry, did not bring it in.
So we think this is $50,000 to do this trail?
No.
That's with a lot of mouth work. That's with a lot of house work. That's utilizing like our youth corps and doing quite a bit of the work in house.
So realistically, what is it going to cost?
You know, we're hopefully going to bid out the trail at the top of 128 there at Coyote Ridge off that parking lot, and that also is about a quarter-mile accessible trail. That will be a great estimate for us to use. It's hard to know.
But this is also deferring development of interpretive sign to a later, later year, next year.
I suspect that, I mean, if we were to hire that outright, it could be three times.
And the time we talk about trails, it's like, why does it cost so much? And then, you know, it does.
It's a lot of liability.
And it would be great if we find an opportunity to team up with the county because they do have some internal resources that could help bring that price tag down.
I think, too, the getting out there for the annual tours is treacherous.
If the parks and trails-related grant opportunity has gone away, we might consider a bigger capital interpretive grant through the State Historic Fund because they do sometimes support development like that, including interpretive purposes and bigger things where we can get more money out of them.
That's great.
Maybe, maybe we can get more money if they, you know, it's competitive, so...
And this trail is right near the top of the list for OSAC as well, so very much.
And can it be funded with our most open space dollars?
It's a good question because so much of it is not even on town property, but it is, it could be argued that it is for the purpose of the enjoyment of open space. It'd be a good question to see how that would play out.
But Boulder County has no appetite or...
No, they actually do have an appetite. They like the idea, they supported it wholeheartedly. They had some grant funding, but it was county-wide, and it was only $300,000 to begin with. And I think they were struggling with how to divvy that up amongst all the projects in the county.
Can we just propose to go hazzies with them? See what happens? Send them an IGA and just say, look, we'll, everybody filled it out, and just sign. Sign here.
Stick behind the two other documents.
I mean, I'm joking, but I'm not really, if you make it easy for them, they can actually get done.
Try anything. I think they've had some turnover in the last year and a half, and maybe it sounds like things are settling down and people are in positions where we can actually have a conversation.
It seemed like their two main concerns last time we talked to them is to superior maintain it and that they work out their cattle agreements for whatever they need to do to keep cattle out there based on whatever land they're going to stay on the place.
And I believe the county is proposing go crazy on a portion of this this year because it is so rocky and rubbly out there. They're finding it difficult to maintain as well.
Well, I think this is overdue for a trail. We've been talking about it for years. I would reach out to the county, propose some sort of split that is fair between the county. I mean, I think a 50-50 split is very fair. And let's see if we can get this thing accelerated. I guess my only note and suggestion is whatever trail does end up getting built, recognize that people will be biking on it for sure, so make sure that it's built with that kind of use in mind.
So this will be a dead-end trail though, right?
Yeah.
So the good thing is that no one's going to ride it.
Okay, you can't connect to the...
You can. Fair enough. We'll put a bunch of nails out there.
Well, we're going to position the signs strategically.
Well, I mean, well, whether it actually connects or if people are going to be going the wrong way, there's a lot of, the point is there's a lot of bikers that are just getting into the open space there. And whether they're making a wrong turn and going down, you know, this is...
It might learn something.
There's already a two-track that goes down there anyway, and it's a two-track trail, so if they want to do that, they can already do it.
But signage to like, say, like if you're looking for like the mountain bike trails, go that way. This is probably...
Another reason for the goats, because they don't charge the bikers.
Another reason they actually get that in there as quick as we can is when they do the walk down through there in the spring, and you have a lot of people. Sometimes we have, what is it, 30, 40 people on that? And for those two old ruts in there, which were from the mine itself, it's a little bit hard for some people, especially the older people, to walk in it. So a nice path in there would make it a whole lot easier on them.
So are we thinking like a paved concrete path?
I think we're looking at more of a crusher fine, but stabilized surface, so for the natural looking.
I think we'd be tickled with a grapple, yeah.
Yeah.
It's better when it's out there now, for sure.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do. Let's reach out to the county, see if they are interested in accelerating this and get it done.
Thanks.
Thank you, Leslie.
All right. Last but not least, we've got a discussion about town history, including programming regarding town history, including our native indigenous community. Jen, I think you asked for this item to be added as well. So you want to take it away?
Sure. When I moved to Superior and started looking at the history of Superior, I was surprised knowing that this was indigenous land to see that the beginning in the children's coloring book and on the website was all William Hake. And so I reached out to the Historical Commission, I think before I was ever on any boards or anything, and asked for that to be looked at again and be updated. And I know from talking to other parents at the school that they're, they don't use the materials because it's not the proper history of the land. And so I know that I reached out to the Historical Commission about updating that information, and it's been a while, so I was just looking out to see if, I know some of it had been updated and to kind of see where that was and if there was anything you wanted to share about it.
Yeah, I know as far as like the coloring book is concerned, we have looked at that and adding some additional details there. It really kind of just comes down to printing costs, so I know we can definitely make that possible. With indigenous history writ large, we have been really busy, and we do have our fall program coming up that we're actually going to be focusing in on indigenous history. There's a nonprofit organization called Right Relations Boulder that we're going to be working with that are going to be presenting in October. I know at our next meeting, we're going to kind of be nailing down a specific date on that, which will cover specifically Boulder County indigenous history, which is great. And then in addition to that, we usually have the fall program, which is kind of a lecture about history. We're also partnering with the Healing Bus, which is a bus that would be stationed ideally probably at the community center for a couple of hours, which focuses on the Sand Creek massacre. So we're wanting to try to make this a little bit larger than what we've done in the past since we have some great volunteers and organizations who are interested in doing this and coordinating with the town to make it possible. And we're also, part of our internship responsibilities is coordinating with OSAC, and she is reviewing a number of different Arapaho Ute names that could be used and new trail names throughout the town and using indigenous names there. So that is something I know we've been really keen on improving and updating the town history with. So we have been very active and involved there, and I know Scott has been leading a lot of the efforts there, too. So you want to add some additional details?
Sure. With Jade, our intern, we, she was most interested in working with the indigenous issues. So the first project identified for her was the place names since OSAC was looking for native names that could potentially give to trails. So it created a list of tribal dictionary and lexicon sources for, for not just Ute, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Kiowa, and there's seven of them, Apache, anyway. And, you know, that's Lakota, Sioux was the last one. But those are the main cultural groups that were in this area. I mean, there are more than that, but that's the minimum to focus on. And so the second thing we're going to have her look into, assuming she gets that far, or we'll have someone else do it on the next step, is getting an interpretive, like rotating exhibits such as through History Colorado or like the Healing Bus opportunities even better. That's more than just history and more than just Sand Creek massacre. It's about tribal relations and community, which is important. And working with tribes, it's not just about, oh, they were here, let's talk about how they were here. Tribes, they're still out there. Our surrounding communities, Longmont, Boulder, Lafayette, all of them have been working on developing direct tribal relations with various tribes, especially northern Arapaho and River. So the interpretive exhibit we're looking into and then possibly developing interpretive materials more beyond just a coloring book update would be the third list of volunteer projects to look into. I'm recommending against having any kind of Native American collection unless it's rotating and borrowed, but it's problematic. But there are opportunities to potentially get rotating collections in, so it'll be difficult. And beyond that, I think when this issue was brought up last year, on the topic of it being beyond just history, it's, for me, there's the question of how does the town actually want to engage with tribes and tribal relations? What kind of relationship is the town interested in developing with tribes? Do you want it to be at the town government level to the tribal government level? Do you want it to be at sub-organizations to sub-organizations is what it comes down to. With tribes, it's a lot more than just history, right? It's about continued culture. Like Boulder Open Space, for instance, has agreements with tribes so they can go out there and collect plans that they can't get out on the reservations like in Oklahoma. They can only get in the mountains, right? And opportunities like that. Longmont has youth exchange programs with reservations and different opportunities for youth exchange. And so there's a lot more things going on. Indigenous relations, people help explain and set up that stuff. So the fall program will be more than just about history. The town paid for me to go to the Indigenous Connections Summit in Golden earlier this year. It was a good program. A lot of it was museum-focused around museums that have to contend with native artifacts and collections or even burial remains and negotiating their return, which fortunately we don't have to do any of that, but they also have a lot of good programming around creating relations and sustaining relations with tribes. And so it's of benefit to the tribe as well as the local community. And there's a lot of demand for it, so if Superior doesn't, we'll be competing against many other communities, right? So it's a matter of how, when, and what works out best for everyone in those regards. And if they do do the Indigenous Connections Conference again next year, whether it's Golden or somewhere else, I would recommend that it would be beneficial for someone else from the town to attend that and to understand what those relationships are like, especially someone who's interested in sustaining and maintaining those. I work with tribes my daily job every day across the country, and I evaluate it as a good conference, you know, both locally or more broadly, good speakers from many tribes. Anything else I should say on that?
No, I think that covers everything. So we are taking it very seriously.
That's so much more than I was expecting.
You've been doing a lot, it sounds like.
Uh, not really, I just...
Yeah, you have.
I just know how to talk about these things, you know? It's, I'm a consultant by day, so I know how to consult a little bit.
I didn't realize that the massacre was so heavily tied as a pivot point to the Battle of Little Bighorn, like, and so that is one of the things that like generally people learn about. And so it feels like an easy thing to reverse it back to something very local that happened here and tying it into history that's already pretty standardized.
Actually, one of Maureen's big interests and topics is the bigger context and how we can incorporate, you know, it's like start local and then get people to think about how it ties into bigger contexts.
That's awesome.
And that's part of the interpretive stuff Maureen has been advocating.
Thanks, Maureen. Yeah, that's really great. I imagine that as we learn, then whatever the right relationships or development are will kind of show, you know, the trails will be there, like what we, what it looks like, what it develops, because I understand the more we learn and understand, it's not just acknowledging like, okay, great, good job, it's here.
Right.
It's the relationship with acknowledging the people impacted and how we bring them into recovery.
Correct, correct. Yeah, and that's one of the things a lot of, I also went to one of the ANFRAM meetings at History Colorado this spring, and both this meeting and one in Golden, you know, since so many people are aware about land acknowledgement and things these days, most of these meetings now start with, do not start with land acknowledgement, start with reaching out and talking to the tribes.
Yeah. I attended a Rachel Equity Conference by Gare and the Right Relations. They had some pieces throughout that during the week, and so they're a great organization and really have, already doing so much with Boulder. So it's really awesome that we get to tie into some of those things at so far like no cost to us or residents and just people that want to share this information. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, I'd be interested in the town, you know, picking a broader relations approach, and if the Historical Commission could be a good conduit for that, good, but a broader town relationship with one or more tribes would be a good thing potentially as well.
Well, I appreciate you bringing this up so we can work at expanding what we provide and all the various avenues that we use to get the word out, so.
I appreciate you guys looking into it. It's, it can be a lot of work, and there's so much information already, substantial history. So to be asked to like go beyond that is, I realized was a small ask with a big ask in terms of what it requires from you guys to write that narrative. So, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up. Thanks for the work. I think that this is a valuable thing for us to continue to work towards to see what additional information we can gather and relations with tribes we can set up. So I think that that's all a good thing. So thanks for bringing that up and thanks for suggesting it.
I would go so far as to say if the town bought it worthwhile to set up some kind of committee on Native American relations, like a small one, it would be a bad thing to figure out an approach or plan.
All right. We're at time. We've got our work session tonight. So thank you to the Historical Commission for joining us for dinner. Thank you for all your work serving the community. We're indebted to your volunteerism over the years, so thank you.
Thanks for all of your support.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Have a good one.
Thanks, Leslie.